Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, February 18th, 2016. And the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2016 Agenda Resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the ninth day of December 2015. Legal notice of the adoption of said resolution appeared in the November 13, 2015 edition of the Princeton Packet. Could you call the board, please?
Ms. Burris?
Here.
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen. Ms. Crumiller?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning. Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mayor Lempert?
Here.
Ms. Sproul? Mrs. Trotman?
Here.
Mrs. Ullman?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Williamson. Libacorm?
Thank you. All right, announcements. Julie, can I ask you to talk about Monday?
Yes. We have a working session planned between Council and HPC regarding the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic Preservation District Proposal. And I believe it starts at 7:30?
No, it starts at 7:00.
7:00 PM, everyone. 7:00 PM, not 7:30. And so it's open to the public, and we hope everyone can attend.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Ullman, did you want to talk about the master plan meeting of a week or so ago?
Yes. The master plan committee met on February 10th with representatives from the Bicycle Master Plan for an update on the plan that they've been pursuing with, I have to say, very substantial diligence from the time they announced it. Dan Stockton, the Municipal Engineers Department was there along with the representative from Parks, Parsons, Brinkhoff. This is, as most of you know, is in part funded by the New Jersey Transportation, Department of Transportation, and is part of the Complete Streets Policy that this municipality has been encouraging and following. And they reported on their progress so far, the number of surveys, their focus groups, their forms that have been filled out. They've had really, I guess, above-average responses on their various requests for information. I believe their whole, the whole program is on their website, so if you want to see it, I recommend taking a look. And I thought I'd also mention that Root One Magazine this week has a long article on the Complete Streets Policy, how it originated, who originated it, and a couple of really passionate articles by bicyclists, reminding us of the difficulties that they have faced, but were recognizing also the pedestrians and cars. They just point out that cars weigh 3,000 tons and bicycles likely weigh around 25 pounds or something. So it's an interesting thing. So that was what we did. It was very interesting, and we will be seeing them in the future because this will become part of the community master plan when it's completed.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Ullman on that? All right. Then let's move along on the agenda to the minutes that you were sent, your packet. These are the regular meeting of December 3rd of last year. And those who were present were Julie, David Cohen, Jenny Crumiller, myself, Mayor Lempert, Ms. Trotman, and Gail Ullman. Are there any additions, corrections? Yes?
Just a tiny one, it's not Princeton Township at the top.
Right. Just everyone cross out Township. Anything else? Was that the only place that occurred? Hearing none, would someone like to make a motion? I'll move it. Thank you, Ms. Crumiller. Is your second?
I'll second, Gail Ullman.
Second by Ms. Ullman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right. And that brings us to the hearing for this evening. It's Snowden Development LLC. This is a preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan. Snowden Lane, Block 3001, Lots 1 and 2. And following our usual pattern, I'm going to ask Mr. Solo to fill us in from his report, and I'll ask Mr. Muller to swear Mr. Solo in.
You swear your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So I swear my own.
Thank you, and good evening. As the chair indicated, this is a preliminary and final major subdivision. There are no variances associated with this application. I'm going to provide a little bit of background, then give you a summary of the staff reports. I'm going to be using two drawings. The top drawing on this board I'll label as PB1. That's the proposal we're going to be discussing tonight as a cluster. At the bottom, I'll label it PB2. This was the original submission that came into the board back in October. So just by way, as some background, the original application for this 12.4 acre site was to create six lots varying in size from 1.5 to 2.7 acres. The site disturbance on this site was fairly extensive. Let me just stop for a minute. Snowden Lane, as you're looking at this on both maps, is to the right or the east. North is sort of straight up. I've labeled Van Dyke Road. In effect, though, that's really somewheres down here. It's about 600, 700 feet from the subject site. There's a vacant lot here that has an approval for single-family homes as well that has never been perfected or developed. So the orientation is Snowden to the right, Van Dyke down at the bottom, off to the top. At the top of both maps would be a portion of Harrington Woods over here, and then, as you can see on both maps, there are some single-family homes that have their rear yards abutting this site. For the original application, which is the bottom half of my drawing, all of the board's advisory committees, as well as the staff, recommended to the applicant that they consider a cluster subdivision to reduce site disturbance, reduce tree removal, move the development further away from critical environmental features located to the rear and in the southeast front corner of the lot as well. During our October meeting of this past year, the applicant presented a concept plan for a cluster development that would result in seven residential lots, one detention basin lot, and then preserving approximately 60% of the site, or about 7.5 acres would be permanently preserved. The cluster that I'm going to talk about shortly conforms in general with that concept that the board saw. As I indicated, this is a 12.43 acre lot. It consists of two lots. There are two existing homes on it. It is on the west side of Snowden. It's about 590 feet from Van Dyke to Turune Road. The two single-family homes that are there are within a cleared area on each of the lots. They are proposed to be removed. There's a small wetlands area, as I indicated, in the southeast corner of the lot. On the top drawing, you can see it's stashed. That is the wetlands and some of the buffer. And then to the rear of the site, there is a stream and some associated wetlands and floodplain with it as well. Except for the area that's cleared where the two existing homes are, which are in this general location on both drawings, the site itself is fairly wooded. Now, speaking mostly about the cluster, the seven residential lots will range in size from 18,467 square feet to 21,744 square feet. So that's somewheres between .4 of an acre and a half acre size. There is a slight increase from six to seven residential lots, and that's permitted under the former township's cluster provision ordinance. It provides a bonus if the applicant meets certain public access requirements and provides more than 50% of the site in open space that has been reviewed by the zoning officer, and it does conform to that. Just to highlight some of the differences between the two projects, the cul-de-sac entrance off of Snowden has been shortened. The original plan, the cul-de-sac, was about 700 feet in length. The cluster one, it's 420 feet in length. For the cluster development, they were proposing sidewalks on both sides of the road. The road is about 28 feet from cartway, the paved surface. Under the original approval, I think they, I thought they only had sidewalk on one side, but they may have had it on both. You can see by looking at the two drawings, the stormwater plan has been modified. There's one basin located here at the end of the cul-de-sac on the cluster plan. On the original plan, it required two basins on its, on a lot with the, with a house to handle the stormwater requirement. The sanitary sewer service that's proposed has been slightly changed originally. With the original application, they were going through the development to the south and then off to a pump station. With this cluster plan, they are now considering coming down Snowden all the way to connect to the storm sewer. That provides a benefit in that there's less disturbance because they'll be going through the road. It also provides a benefit to some of the residents in the immediate area. There have been a few that have contacted engineering, and Jack can speak to that a little bit more, indicating that they are on individual septic systems that are beginning to fail, so there's community interest in providing the sewer line as well. This property is located in the R2 zone. It does permit clustering. It does permit single-family homes. As I indicated, the development complies with all the cluster provisions and no variance. Our ordinance also requires that the board make specific findings when there's a cluster development. Those specific findings relate to six criteria found at Section 10B, 189.1 in our ordinance. I've outlined those in my report and then commented on each of those. If the board members have questions on those, we can, we can discuss those in more detail. Otherwise, I think they will show up in our findings as something that you find in order to permit the cluster. By way of individual subdivision and site plan comments, the board packet, or we received a traffic report that updates from the original to the cluster. And in that report, the applicant's traffic expert indicates that the additional home going from six to seven will result in approximately 10 additional trips for the development. The original site had approximately 60.6 trips. This now will have 70.7, so the increase with the one lot is de minimis in nature. The report concludes that the development will have a negligible impact on peak hour traffic. The town's land use engineer and stormwater consultant have found that the stormwater plan meets the ordinance's requirements. You'll see in their report, they have a number of technical issues which they would like the applicant to address, and have suggested that if the board approves the application, they just simply be conditions of the approval. Both the engineer and my report note that there was a Note 38 on Sheet 9 of 8 indicating that the proposed detention basin would be dedicated to the township. I don't think we are interested in that. We would prefer it stay with the homeowners association. There was some discussion during the concept as to whether or not the 7.5 acre lot 1.09, the open space lot, would be dedicated. The applicant will speak to that being dedicated to the town. I think staff is recommending that. We would look for the board to at least recommend, and obviously, the applicant would then have to make that request or that dedication at the approval of council. So ultimately, the mayor and council will have final decision on whether it's dedicated or remains with the, in open space group or remains with the homeowners association, excuse me. We note that there is a tree inventory within your packet. It identifies 625 trees that were noteworthy. It also indicates that a total of 145 will be removed to permit this development, and the applicant is proposing a total of 145 additional trees, broken down as 61 shade trees, 52 understories, and 32 evergreen trees. Within the engineering report, just to highlight a couple of Mr. West's comments, he suggested that the detention basin, again, we're talking about the cluster, be reforested, so basically trees be planted in the base, in the basin itself. We've suggested that a conservation easement be placed over the wetlands, the wetland buffers and the flood hazard areas, those areas that could not be developed, and we'd like to see them protected with a conservation easement as well. And then finally, the applicant did provide a green development information statement that's been submitted. They've indicated that they will try to use as many sustainable building practices as possible, and they'll be included both in the site and in the design of the homes, but they have not designed the homes yet, so they were not able to commit to many of the green development standards. That's a summary. Before I take questions, Jack or Derek, did you want to add anything? Did I forget anything?
I think you covered everything. Swear or sign?
Could we swear both of you in first?
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So I swear my own.
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. West.
Lee, cover. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board for myself or the staff before we turn it over to the applicant?
There was extensive discussion in the Environmental Commission report about the drainage system, and I know that the engineering report covered that as well. Is this something that the applicant is going to discuss?
I think they will. Jack, did you want to offer? I mean, I can, I can address the issue. The one concern that the Environmental Commission had was they had, the applicant is asking for a waiver of having to provide onsite recharge, and that's a DEP requirement in the stormwater regs that the municipality has adopted. And what the Environmental Commission said in the original application, they had onsite dry wells for each lot. And actually, we had a concern with that because the soil types, based on actual soils testing, are not suitable for recharge. They're D-type soils which don't provide adequate drainage. So actually, in the original application, we had asked the applicant to get rid of them. And what the Environmental Commission looked at was the soil survey from the county, which is kind of an overall generalization of the soils. But based on actual soil bearings taken onsite, we feel the soil is not suitable for recharge. I have a case where it's a single-family home right down the street on Snowden that was just done. They actually did a dry well, and it stays full of water, constantly overflows every time it rains onto the neighbor's property, so we have issues with that. So in this case, we are making, had made recommendations for changing the type of stormwater management they have, going with a sand filter in the detention basin, which will, will address some of those issues. Again, we're, we're also asking for underdrains in the sand filter because, again, the groundwater won't recharge. The applicant has agreed to all our recommendations in the stormwater report, so, I mean, we're comfortable. It does meet the ordinance. Just unfortunately, based on the soil types, you can't get onsite recharge.
Thank you. Yes.
What about what in the PEC report, it says use of grass well, vegetative filter strip, et cetera? It seemed like there are alternatives.
Yeah, and they do have some grass wells, but, I mean, to meet the stormwater ordinance, to get the, the grass wells, they do help, and they do have some onsite, but to, to manage the stormwater, you, you need a, you know, an actual detention basin.
So it would be impossible?
No, they are doing, they are doing some of the-
I mean, it would be impossible to solve the problem using these methods? Is that what you're saying?
That helps, and they are using it, but you can't rely solely on that.
So it would be impossible for them to solve the problem by using the vegetative?
Correct.
Yes, Tim?
Question both in the shade tree commission report and in the Environmental Commission report. They expressed concerns over the trail that's proposed on the site. Could you address their concerns?
Yeah, the, the, one of the things, and actually, the, the Friends of Princeton Open Space had asked that they have a linear trail running north-south along the, the stream. And what the applicant has shown is kind of just a conceptual meandering path from the, the end of the cul-de-sac that would eventually connect to that north-south path. The actual location of the path is not, it's kind of something that gets field-located. Obviously, the intent is that you're not cutting trees down. You know, we, actually, I was just talking with the applicant before the meeting as far as what the surface material would be. Most likely, it's just going to be a wood chip path.
Well, does it, but does the trail connect anything, this proposed?
Well, ultimately, it'll, it'll connect to the park and all the way down to Van Dyke.
But right now, are there existing trails that it will connect?
No, not at the moment.
Actually, if I could, if you remember, Harrington Woods is up here, excuse me, and they are showing a potential connection, which is this trail here. And then as it comes down to the south, it's looking to connect into that adjacent residential development, which is also going to have a trail system, and it's somewheres in this general nature.
The corner.
Their, excuse me, trail was also associated with the stream, so we're trying to, with the adjacent property owner, tie into this, which gets you to Harrington Park. So you would have from Turune up to Harrington Park.
So the trail is, this portion of the trail is owned by the HOA?
It may be. If the town elects to accept the 7.5 acres, it becomes a town trail. If the town does not, this trail, circulates just as it is, will have public access, and that's part of the, the cluster provisions are, and that's part of how they get the, the bonus lot, is by providing public access to what may be private open space.
Ms. Ullman?
Yes, in the, the really-
I'm listening. I gotta get some water.
Okay, I'm watching. In the excellent Environmental Commission report, they remark that two of the seven buildable lots, 1.07, 1.08, come in, are, are within, have portions that are within wetlands barrier, I think. I wonder if you could just identify those, and maybe the applicant later on could speak to-
Okay. 1.08 is the lot at the corner of Snowden and the new access road, and then 1.07 is adjacent to that, to the west.
Can you show us what parts?
The hatched area is wetlands. There's a dash line that runs through in this general area of everybody. That's the buffer area. So there will be no disturbance, no homes, no driveways.
Well, it said something about fill.
Um, I don't have the grading plan. The applicant, I think, can address that. We were also asking that if you put a conservation easement, it would include the buffer area as well.
And additionally, the, the property to the south of this is not yet developed. I think it's a landmark project, and I don't know where that stands, but, I mean, if that is wetlands, I guess we need to be cognizant if the landmark project develops.
Yes, they're maybe coming back to the board. They ran into some DEP issues, and that's what's been slowing them down. I don't know if it's related to the wetlands or not. I know they did get a letter of interpretation on the wetlands. I just don't know, maybe the applicant does, in terms of where this wetland and how it relates to the, you're correct, it's a landmark development.
So someday we'll need to, that might be-
That's at least five years old or more.
Yeah. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Muller?
Just a couple of questions. Lee, you indicated that the trail would have public access from the cul-de-sac?
Yes, if you look at the map, it's really hard to see, but they do show the trail going along the upper edge of the detention basin, so that you have it to the cul-de-sac. Otherwise, I mean, you do have access this way back, but it's through wetlands. During the concept hearing, I think the board or staff asked that we have some sort of access from the cul-de-sac as well.
Okay. Now, if somebody wanted to, to get to the access point by vehicle, can they park on the cul-de-sac?
I think we're going to have parking on, on one side or two sides?
Somebody could potentially park. There is a parking lot in the park that's, that's not that far from here, so most likely, anybody wanting to use it would go directly to the park. But, but to answer your question, yes, it's, it's going to be a public street. Somebody could park on the cul-de-sac.
But you would expect it, excuse me, that most people that would use it from this point would either actually live in the subdivision or in a nearby neighborhood.
That's correct.
And Jack, I had a question for you about the waiver. That's from a DEP requirement?
Well, it's a DEP requirement, but it's actually in, in our ordinance also because we've adopted the DEP rules.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
I had a question about the sidewalks. So there'll be sidewalks on the cul-de-sac, but also sidewalks along Snowdon Lane.
I left that out, thank you. Yeah, there will be sidewalks on both sides of the cul-de-sac, and as per our master plan, there, there is going to be a, I believe it's an asphalt path, running the entire frontage along Snowden, which eventually will connect with the adjacent development and down to Turune.
Okay, but at this point, it won't be connected until that other development?
Right. Their obligation is just to do their frontage.
Okay. And would the expectation be that the, if there's children living in these homes, that they would qualify for hazardous drop busing? Do we know that?
I, I don't know. I don't know if-
I got another question, if I may.
Let's let Jen, Jen.
So the asphalt path, is that going to be maintained? Who's going to maintain that?
That's a township's sidewalk or pathway, I believe. It's in our right of-
Well, not township. Lee forgets.
Forget.
Well, is that-
We don't township, we forget.
Okay, because is that, could it be a sidewalk that, I mean, I was just at a public works meeting today about the, all the equipment that these paths are causing a, you know, a maintenance challenge to us, because that means we're going to be taking on some snow removal burden by that. So would it be better if it were, I think, isn't the rule that if it's a, a path, we take it on, but if it's a sidewalk?
I'm not sure there's a written rule that-
There isn't?
-the difference between a four-foot concrete sidewalk or a six-foot asphalt path. I don't, I don't believe there's anything written as to who maintains if the maintenance is different on either run. I would, I would assume that the property owners adjacent to that six-foot path would be required to, to maintain it as, you know, as to shovel the snow and stuff, not necessarily the maintenance of it.
Wouldn't it be the homeowners association, since it's really funding the-
Potentially, yeah. How it plays out, whether it's, I mean, because it's actually part of those adjacent lots.
And this would be, may be dedicated, open space, so it's-
I mean, I just wonder if we can-
I think we should make that, I agree with Ms. Crumiller, we should make that clear, who has responsibility for the maintenance of the path.
I'm sure the applicant can comment better on that than us.
Yes, Ms. Ullman?
I meant to ask about the sewers. I mean, that obviously is something that would benefit that whole end of town. Are we going to, as a municipality, consider putting in sewers at the time this place is developed? Or are we going to make them put in seven septic tanks, and then we will go along in 10 years?
No, this project will be sewed. It's which way does it go? Does it go down Snowden or another way? And I think I should defer to Jack a little bit on that one.
Okay.
So the, the proposal is, yes, it will be sewed. They're, they're not proposing septic systems. And there's, there's a group. There's this applicant and the applicant to the subdivision just to the south, and I, I forget how many homeowners, about 10 homeowners, there's, trying to get together and, and come up with a, we have a plan that works. They're going through the permitting process now, but as a condition of this application, they're showing that the sewer comes out to Snowden. If that deal falls through and doesn't work, and the applicant had to go back to the plan that it went through the back of the site, through the adjacent subdivision to the pump station, we would ask that the applicant would have to come back to the board to present that different plan. It's in the municipality's best interest that the sewer line go down Snowden. It helps the adjacent residents. It's a much better plan.
Anything else? I had just one other thing I didn't understand. There was a suggestion that the decision on the tree- that the decision on the tree, trees not be done initially, that the grading of the site be determined later?
Right. What, what's, what happens is, they're showing kind of a generic box that will be a house, generic lot grading, to show that it works, that you can get a house on these lots, and approximate how, approximately how it would be graded. But we don't know exactly what type of house is going to be built. Somebody may build a bigger house than they've shown, a smaller house. They may want it pushed up, pushed back, within the setbacks. So when they come to build the house, we actually have to review the plan. And there may be a way that more trees can be saved. There may be, may be less. I mean, if, if somebody, they want to put a pool or things like that, you may have more clearing. But really, it's something that we look at on every single lot that's developed in town. And that, that actual number of trees would be finalized when they come in for each individual house.
But you can do the drainage plan without the contouring of the lots?
Yes. I mean, this, this shows the, generally, how it's going to be graded, but, you know, through retaining walls, or there are other ways that you can reduce the amount of grading on the site, you know, with walkout basements, different type houses. You know, if there's custom houses being built, it can be done a little differently.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Solomon?
Jack, when would the plot plan be submitted? At the time of building permit?
At time of building permit.
All right. Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, was there anybody here from the Environmental Commission or Shade Tree who wanted to comment on the report? Anyone at all? Okay, fine. If none, I think we're ready to hear from the applicant.
Thank you very much. For the record, Gary Fortune of the firm Stark &amp; Stark, here on behalf of the applicant.
Gary, as you may know, in Princeton, we swear in the attorneys. I don't know if that's because we don't trust them, or because the decision was made a long time ago-
Not a problem.
That they wind up, you know, really giving testimony. So if you could raise your right hand, just swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Absolutely.
So swear or affirm.
One of the things that I jokingly say in your-
And Gary, could you speak into the mic a little more?
Is that better? Okay. One of the things that I jokingly said, and you've no doubt heard before, is attorneys get paid by the word. But when your staff does such a thorough job, it makes it difficult for me to have all that much to say. Having said that, I do have a few specific items that I did want to address. First of all, and I think you guys know this, and, and it was presented, you probably recall it. We had originally a conforming conventional subdivision that had essentially developed the entire site, with the exception of the environmentally constrained portion in the, in the very rear of the property. We had, based upon your staff, and we've met with your staff and worked with them very closely with regard to the design of this particular project, but they recommended that we look at the cluster subdivision. So you may recall that we met with you on a conceptual basis to get your feedback in terms of whether that was something that you preferred. As well, you had an opportunity here from the public, and the overwhelming response was that you wanted to see us do the clustered subdivision. So again, we have a conforming subdivision. We're not asking for any relief with regard to the subdivision whatsoever. The conventional was, was conforming, but we think that frankly, not only is this a better, this is a better plan overall, and certainly from the environmental perspectives, from the perspective of municipality, as well as the folks that will ultimately live there. We are saving hundreds of trees as a result of this. We're shortening the cul-de-sac by several hundred feet. We're doing a number of different things that allows us to preserve 60% of the lot as open space. And as was indicated with regard to the open space, we have a choice, ultimately be to the municipality, not the township's choice, the municipality's choice, in terms of whether or not you want us to dedicate the open space, in which case it'll be available to the public overall, or whether you would like a homeowners' association to maintain it, in which case we'll provide you with an easement for, for the nature trail, that your ordinance, by the way, encouraged. Encourages nature trail, encourages the open space, encourages almost everything that we've done with regard to, to this project. So I hope that you continue to find it, you know, something that you can endorse and, and support. There's a few specific comments or items that I want to address. And I think, first of all, it may have been Jack, but as far as the sewer goes, if the sewer lines for the adjacent development are in, we're going to tie into those. If not, we're going to have to go back to the original plan with regard to the sewers and connect, in order to be able to make sure. But one way or another, as indicated, we will in fact sewer the project. The basin, I just want to be clear with regard to the basin, that is not going to be dedicated. That was just a, an unfortunate note on the plan, so we will certainly correct that. There was a comment about forestation of the basin. One of the recommendations from your professionals, and, and we have certainly adopted or anticipate adopting, is to make this a sand-bottomed basin. And it has a number of positive impacts that our engineer can go through. But the one comment was with regard to foresting it in the basin, and I don't believe that we can do that with regard to the sand-bottomed basin. Having said that, we'd be happy to work with staff. There's landscaping that's appropriate, whether around the basin or otherwise, but anything that's appropriate for that.
And I agree, I have no objection to that. And I think that was something that was in my original port, report. I wasn't even sure it made it to the, to the amended report. But, but I agree that it's not appropriate with the sand bottom to have the reforestation.
The nature trails, as was indicated, both how it's going to be constructed, whether it's going to have woodchips or the like, and the final location, we'll work that out, both in the field and with your professional staff as, as the, as the matter proceeds. There was a question with regard to fill of the wetlands, and I believe that the only wetlands that are being filled are associated with road improvements that your master plan calls for. I don't believe, and our engineer will confirm, that, that that's the case. There are various comments with regard to certain species on site. There are no regulated species at all associated with this, once they, you know, take the steps that are necessary. As you know, the DEP looks at that with regard to the letter of interpretation. A letter of interpretation has in fact been issued. All of that has been considered, so there's nothing that will prevent us from building the development exactly as been proposed. But in any event, that's something that the DEP addresses, both with the LOI that they've already issued, as well as any of the permitting under the wetlands or the Flood Hazard Act. And with regard to, I think there's a question with regard to the, I forget the terminology you used, but the path, the asphalt path along the frontage. We can, we can have that either maintained by an association or the homeowners. We'll deal with which it's going to be, but we'll, I think we can assume that responsibility. I think those are the primary issues that we ultimately want to address. There are other items that we'll go through, report. We're agreeing with the vast majority of the recommendations that have been made. There are certain ones that either we need to clarify or, or address, but, and we'll do that. But other than that, unless you have any questions or comments, I will introduce our engineer, who can actually provide some more notable comments rather than my, mine.
Gary, just clarification.
Sure.
With respect to the asphalt path, are you asking for the option of, of the developer deciding, whether it's the homeowners' association?
Yes.
Or the individual? Okay. And then, obviously, the board can address that.
In other words, it may be more suitable for the, the residents, as opposed to the homeowners' association, to, to deal with that. But we'll, we'll deal with that as, as we proceed. If there's nothing further, I'm going to introduce our engineer.
Go ahead.
If we can have him sworn in, please.
Sure. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So I swear or affirm. Actually, please state your full name for the, for the record and spell your last name.
My name is Michael McIntyre, M-C-I-N-T-Y-R-E. I reside in Defford, New Jersey. I've been a professional engineer for 14 years. I have testified in front of numerous boards and have been accepted as an expert witness in those boards.
You accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want to go on?
The application for the clustering option, as shown above, consists of seven lots, just under a half an acre. We have a 7.5 acre open space lot and also a basin lot.
Just, if, if I might, for the record, just a couple of housekeeping items. One, we've submitted a number of reports and documents in support of the application. I don't know if you want us to go through those again, or if we can just deem them as, to be part of the record.
That's fine.
Okay. And then, have you accepted Mike's credentials as a professional engineer and expert witness? Thank you. Go ahead, Mike. I apologize for interrupting you.
That's okay. The proposed development is consistent with the zoning ordinance for minimum tract area. Six is required. We have 12.4 acres. The lot areas should range from 2.5 to 5, or 0.5 acres. Our lot areas range from 0.4 to 0.5. The minimum lot frontage along Windy Top Court is 37.5. We have-
You know, if I, if I couldn't, again, apologize, Mike. I don't want to take more of the board's time than is necessary. We can have Mike go through as much or as little as is possible. Your professionals indicated that we comply with all the ordinance requirements. We believe that to be the case. We can go through that one by one if you like, or if you're willing to accept that, we'll, we'll move on, whatever your preference is.
Anyone want to hear, go piece by piece? No? Okay, why don't we?
Well, can you tell us all the ones you don't agree with?
Well, when we get to the reports, we'll tell you what we don't agree with. As I said, I think there's not that many that, that we don't. We're just giving you the background on the application, and, and normally, we go through and tell you all the things we comply with and how we comply. But your, your staff has already done that, so I just didn't want to be duplicative as much as possible, being respectful of everyone's time. So if you can move on from there, and let's see if we can focus. We'll do our best to focus on the items that your staff didn't touch on. But I think that's going to leave Mike with not a heck of a lot to do, but that's all right.
All right.
Certainly the stormwater.
Okay. Did I skip the roadway and all that stuff?
If it's just a compliance issue, you can skip it. If there's something in particular you think the board needs to know.
Okay. All right. The current stormwater management system consists of a, one extended detention basin and a mechanical treatment device. This, this basin and mechanical treatment device currently meets the standards for water quality and quantity. However, by the board engineer's recommendation, we are removing the mechanical treatment device and the extended detention basin and installing a sand filter basin with a underdrain. The, the sand filter basin provides 80% TSS removal, which is what is required by NJDEP. The revised stormwater management system will meet all standards for water quality and quantity, NJDEP and Princeton. Let's see. As for our last or previous plan, the board's professionals have recommended that we do additional soil testing, which resulted in unsuitable permeability rates for recharged BMPs. There are provisions in the BMP manual for waving groundwater recharge, which was also supported by the board engineer.
And that was based upon the additional soil borings you had done since the last time we were here?
Correct. There were insufficient permeability rates. The, the stormwater management system will also be subject to DEP approval. They're going to do a stormwater review as part of our permitting process to the DEP. There's a couple of, well, several non-structural impact methods that we use for the project, such as vegetated swells on the residential lots, reducing the swell slope to 2%, where the existing slope is around 4 or 5, which also increases the time of concentration. By clustering the development, we preserved a, a great amount of vegetation, native vegetation and natural drainage feature, also minimizing clearing and grading. And the project combines low-maintenance vegetation and native vegetation. I haven't noted in here that-
Can you make sure you're speaking right into the mic, especially when the air comes on?
I'm sorry. Jack is just whispering in my ear if we could perhaps move on from all of this. We can go through as much of the engineering you guys want. We always want to make sure that, A, we're respectful of the board in two regards. One, to make sure they have all the information you need, as well as be respectful of your time. And again, your staff is, as always, has done a very thorough job. We can go through as much of this as you want us to, or as Jack recommends. You know, we can move on and just focus on the reports that you have. And I see a lot of nodding heads, so if you want, we can go jump into the reports.
Yeah, I have a stupid question. Not to do a Denzel Washington on you, but can you explain in a way the fifth grader can understand, if this development is tied to, or expected to be tied to the sewer system, why is there a need for a retention basin?
The sewer, that sanitary sewer is waste from your toilet, and the stormwater system is from runoff when it rains.
So, so this is not going to be tied to the stormwater on Snowden? It's only the waste sewer?
Basically, what they're, what, what's required by both Princeton and DEP is that you have stormwater management on site.
Right.
So regardless of whether it's tied to the storm system that's in Snowden, or, or going back to, ultimately to the wetlands and to the stream, you still have to have a detention basin.
I see.
So that's a Princeton requirement and DEP requirement.
Okay. So I understand that this, this retention basin is currently designed, meets all the requirements. My next question is that, I also understand that the HOA is going to manage it. But do we, does the town have any regulations in terms of how the retention basins are managed? And what I don't want to see is every month in the summer, it gets a clear cut, and, you know, it, it, it creates a negative impact on the environment.
Yeah, one of the conditions that they have is, is a, is an operation and maintenance manual that has to be submitted. And that tells exactly how it's maintained and what's required. And there's also a provision in the ordinance that if, for whatever reason, the homeowners' association stops maintaining it, that, and the municipality had to come in to do any maintenance, that they would, it would be, you know, backcharged against the homeowners' association.
Well, I think what you're asking is, is it going to be a natural, natural plants, or is it going to be grass that's going to be cut? Is that what?
Right. So my concern is actually being over-managed, over-cut, because you get a phone call from a neighbor, and the next thing you know is the entire thing is a crew cut. And, you know, that's a problem when you have more and more of those to occur.
Right. And that's, that's kind of what, why the original comment about reforesting the basin was, to, to eliminate that. But because of the sand filter basin, it will be a grass bottom. But I think we can have language in there where it's only cut, you know, once or twice a year, just to keep it from, from reforesting. But not that it's, you know, cut on a weekly basis.
Okay.
Was your question that whether or not there is a storm sewer system in Snowden lane?
Right. That was one of my earlier questions.
So right now, there's, there is some stormwater, not very much. But as a result of both this development and the one to the south, there will be a more substantial system in Snowden. But, so right now, there is some, not very much. It'll be enhanced with this development and the next development to the south.
Okay.
Oh wait, I have another question about the, because I, I believe that there are now methods of creating a detention basin with certain kinds of plants that you never, you know, that it takes a couple of years for it to take root, but then it's non, you don't ever have to mow it. Isn't the PEC doing, it seems like the PEC was doing something about that in, in some of the detention basins.
I don't remember.
Okay.
You may recall, I don't know if this addresses the issue or not. You may recall, I want to say, back in 2007, the stormwater regulations changed, and some of the old methodologies no longer apply, and there are new methodologies. So for instance, one of the things that predominates now are the sand-bottomed basins. And as was indicated, you don't typically plant those other than the grass because of the fact it's not suitable for it. So there are certain things that we used to do, and that may be what you're thinking of, that in some cases don't apply or are not best practices now.
But I, but I, I don't believe the applicant would have a problem. I'll work with the applicant's engineer, and if there is different things available, I'll, I'll work with our stormwater consultant also. I, I understand what you're looking for, and if, if that's possible, I'm sure the applicant would agree to do that.
Sure. Okay, it sounds to me like, unless there's other questions, I don't mean to, to cut anyone off, but if there's no other questions, it sounds to me that what you'd like us to do is now go through the, the various reports.
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm going to go through these as quickly as I can. As I said, we've, we're in agreement with the vast majority of the comments that are here. If I might first direct your attention to Lee Solo's report. And what I will do, if, if, if it's all right with you, is I'm going to skip over anything that we don't need to comment on, either because we comply or it's just factual in nature, and just deal with the items that need to be addressed. I'm going to refer you first to item 6.2 on- I'm going to refer you first to item six point two on page four.
Okay, Gary, just let me go, let me go back a little earlier. Four point two B just provides that the bylaws and rules be reviewed and approved by the board's attorney. You have no problem with that, right?
No, none at all. Now, as I've indicated, you know, what we'll do, again, if you want to go through them, every one that we agree to, but if we're not commenting on it, we do agree.
Okay, then maybe we don't have to.
Okay. And so, for instance, I'm looking at, you know, E on page three, and that's something that we agree to, but again, we'll, our intention at this point is just skip over those so that we don't have to tell everything we agree with, but just discuss the items that require additional conversation. So, I'm now on page four, item six point two. It indicates there were no technical issues and recommendations with regard to the stormwater, and we'll go through that with your staff and make sure that they're satisfied with the details and that we've addressed those technical requirements. Seven point two was with regard to the forestation of the detention basin. We'll work with your professionals, but generally, there are no plantings of that nature in a sand-bottomed detention basin, so, and we have at the recommendation of your professionals indicated that we would, in fact, do a sand filter at the bottom of that basin. So if there's additional forestation or planting that are appropriate, again, we'll work with your staff. Under eight point two, this comes out of the green development information statement, and has already been indicated. We'll work with your professionals as we proceed. The houses have not been designed yet, so we will incorporate those where they're appropriate, but it's premature to tell you what specifically that they will do. But as always, we'll do our best to accommodate those items and the recommendations that are made. I am next referring to the report by Jack West and Derek Bridger, and this is dated On page three, item number F, I just think there was a clarification in here that, in fact, we're going to have sixty percent open space with regard to the development, and it just needed to be clarified. Can you-
There actually was a typo on our plan where it said forty percent recommended open space. We had to change that to fifty percent.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Our plan had a typo on the zoning schedule. We had forty percent open spaces required, when actually, it's fifty percent.
Great, thank you.
So it's just a typographical item. In fact, we're providing the sixty percent that has been proposed.
But the question's not with the report, it's with your plan?
It's just a typographical item on the plan. It's never you guys, Jack, it's always us.
Just wanted to make sure. You guys were right. We're-
I'm now on page five of that report. The second item number one. And again, we're going to remove the MTD and use a sand filter bottom to address the total suspended solids, so in other words, the water quality, and that's why that recommendation be made. And that applies, that same conclusion applies to the item number two just below it.
Okay, so Gary, the language at the bottom of the second one, first paragraph, that will not be a condition because you're not going to do that, right? You're just going to do what's in the second paragraph, in paragraph number two?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And there had been some concern about the manufactured treatment device, and we're just eliminating that from the plan as not necessary with the sand-filtered bottom. Now I'm on page eight, at the bottom of the page J two, and there are comments in there with regard to the sanitary sewer. I think in terms of where they'd be located is indicated, it depends upon how much progress with the neighboring development at that time, but we'll work out those details with the sewer authority. Those are the only comments on that report. I'm now refer you to Dan Dobremilsky's report dated December twenty-eighth, 2015. In paragraph one, just to indicate, as has been indicated, that we'll do, you know, we'll address the landscaping in more detail as part of the individual plot plan at the time Then on page two of that report, item number three. Mike, can you just clarify that real quick?
They had-
Whether additional steps can be taken with regard to the trees. And again, we'll consider that and address it with your staff at the time of, at the time of the plot plans, time of the construction permits.
Reference to the fence setback from Snowden Lane?
And then four-
Gary, can you stay with three for a second?
Sure.
It's not clear to me what that last sentence of three means.
May be desirable to restrict or increase the minimum setback of privacy fence relative to Snowden Lane to limit views of imposing landscape elements in that area?
The imposing kind of throws me off. I'm not sure what's being referred to.
Um-
I mean, I know you didn't write this, maybe, maybe Lee or Jack or Derek-
I think what he's referring to is just the view from anybody on Snowden Lane looking into the development, because the house is going to be sitting up higher. I think he's just, you know, looking at if that, if they allow a fence, it'd be set back a little bit further, or, you know, just pay closer attention to the landscaping that goes along that area.
And although I'm not certain, I suspect the developer's not going to propose a privacy fence initially, I'm not certain about that, but it's something that may occur down the Did I hear someone had a question?
Well, just the sentence, I agree that it was, I didn't understand it. Limit views of imposing landscape elements? Do you mean limit views of imposing buildings, right?
I think the bottom line is with regard to the location of any privacy fence, we'll, A, deal with it at the time of plot plan, or subsequently, should someone propose it. It would require a permit, so your staff would have an opportunity to take a look at it at that point. Paragraph four. Mike, if you can just walk us through that real quick?
Sure. He's asking if the landscape buffer areas will be restricted. All the landscape buffers and the wetlands buffers, you know, all the landscape buffers will be, have, be restricted.
You're talking about putting in some, like a post and rail fence or something like that? Is that what you're talking about?
That's whatever the DEP requires. They used to require post and rail fence during a conservation easement. We'll probably need one down by the stream. We'll probably make us do one down there.
Now, if DEP will let you, and obviously, Dan suggested the possibility of a hedgerow, shrubs or trees, would that, would you be meanable to that?
Yes, we can comply with that.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have with regard to Dan's report. I'm now refer you to the shade commission report of January twenty-first. The very last paragraph on page two makes comments about the walking path or the nature trail, as I think your ordinance refers to it. Again, it's something encouraged by your ordinance. It's something required for this particular project to, in order to cluster it the way we have. So we do want to provide for it, but again, we'll work out the details with your professional staff.
Could we just go to the paragraph above that, which they suggest substitute plantings? Is this something that you can work out with our professionals?
You referring to what, which section?
The shade tree report, page two.
Right.
They suggest substitute species for-
Yeah, we'll address that. We skipped over it because we're, we intend to comply with that recommendation.
I'm sorry, say that again, I didn't quite catch you-
I said, we skipped over that paragraph because we intend to comply with that recommendation.
On the shade-
Yep.
Okay. Have you finished with the PEC?
I can do that yet.
Okay, so you're just working on shade tree. Okay.
Now, the next report is from the environmental commission dated January twenty-fifth, 2016. I think it's been indicated already, some of the information that they have commented on apply to things that no longer are applicable or don't apply. Let's even go through that quickly, and I do have an environmental consultant here if you want to hear more details, but let me give you our responses, and if you want some testimony on that, we'll be glad to provide that. First of all, with regard to the MTD, that's the mechanical treatment device for the stormwater, we've eliminated that, so that concern now becomes moot. And let me refer you to the paragraph. I'm on the second page, under the heading Landscape Wetlands and Proposed Drainage, that second paragraph made the comment about removing the MTD. The paragraph below talks about the maintenance requirements for stormwater, and was indicated, as the regulations require, we will have a maintenance manual that will, I believe, be recorded, but in any event, will be approved by your staff, that requires the maintenance. And indeed, the maintenance of that by our homeowners' association is required by regulations. So we're going to handle it in that fashion. The next paragraph talks about the groundwater recharge, and I believe it talks about the waiver request in particular. That's based upon old information, based upon the original design of the plan. One of the recommendations from your professionals was that we do additional soil boring, so that we knew exact soil types, not just what's on the mapping. We've done that, and that's where we came up with the issues regarding the permeability, and hence, the request for the waiver of the recharge, which Jack has already commented on and has been indicated, we can't comply with that requirement, so we do need to ask for your request for a waiver there. The last paragraph there, if you would, Mike, can you just clarify what your comment?
Well, all's I was saying there is, she's talking about the peak runoff rates are greater, when in fact, we reduced all the runoff from the site, and we also have treated, removed eighty percent of the total suspended solids.
And that's by way of the sand filter?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to comply with that in that fashion or subject to that? I don't know if comply is the right word, but that's the response to that. Then on the next page, under their heading of, of the, a recommendation, under the heading Recommendations, the first was with regard to best management practices, and in particular, the low impact or the non-structural spreadsheet that's required. And we've not only submitted that, but as the testimony had indicated, as reports have indicated, there's a number of things that we had done with regard to the low-impact nature of that, and to address best management practice and all of those concerns, you know, and we've used a lot of the items that they've recommended. Matter of fact, one of the things that you'll note on the plan is, for instance, each of the individual lots have swells on those lots, and again, there's a number of things that Mike had gone through. If you want to hear more testimony on that, we can give you some more testimony.
Okay, Gary?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like to go specifically through this, so I know what you're agreeing to, and if you're not agreeing to something, what that is.
Okay, so let's go through these-
And we're on the third paragraph, right?
Under recommendations, yes, we're on the third paragraph. Why don't I go through this?
The second paragraph, do you agree to that then? There's no issue there?
No issue there.
Okay.
And that just requires us to get our DEP permits for flood hazard area verification, any permits that may be required. So, with regard to the third paragraph, talks about several low-impact development techniques and non-structural. It makes certain recommendations, and I think has been indicated by Jack and has been indicated by our engineer. We've done everything that we can and should do to address those particular items. Don't feel that there's anything further that we need to address at this point in time. And I don't know that what we've suggested is in any way inconsistent with what they're recommending, but rather, it's a clarification, because we think we've already done that in terms of satisfying the regulatory requirements. I don't know if you want further clarification of that?
No, but what I'm hearing then is, we should not, you would not agree to a condition which incorporated this, all this language-
Well, to the extent that are implying that there's something more we should do, yes, we are not agreeing. We think that we've met all the requirements, and again, your professionals have indicated that we've met the requirements as well, so we're going to rest on that conclusion. And so I think that, there's, I think, four sub-paragraphs there, and applies to all of those. Not to say that we're not dealing with them, we think we have addressed those items. And then, the last sub-paragraph there, increased tree preservation and replacement appropriate native or adapted species and deer-resistant trees, and we'll address all of that during the permitting phase, but certainly, that's something that we will Next paragraph talks about the trail and seeking to minimize the impact, as I indicated. Something we're required to do with regard to this application, it's something your ordinance encourages, and so eliminating is not a possibility. We can reduce the width if that's something the board wants. We can do, take certain steps in terms of that, like using lightweight equipment. Certain portions of it can may be able to be hand-built, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Mike. But the length of a thousand feet is something your ordinance requires. So, we do anticipate making that nature trail a thousand feet, but we'll also work very closely with your staff, as well as deal with that in the field, to make sure that we minimize the impacts as much as we possibly can. That is certainly one of our goals.
With respect to the soil compaction, what you're saying, you're not going to have it built by, you will not agree to have it built by hand, but you'll agree to use lightweight equipment? They basically maximize the-
Yes, we'll build it by hand where we can, but probably in order to get the mulch back there, you would need like a small Bobcat or something.
Okay. And what about the third sub-paragraph, develop a plan for the ongoing maintenance of the trail? Any problem with that?
No, not at all. Again, part of that will depend upon, you know, who ultimately owns it. The next paragraph that begins, the design engineers should prepare a maintenance plan, as we've talked about, that's all to be done, that's all relative to the stormwater system. We'll certainly address any of the trash removal in accordance with your ordinance requirements, but we are going to rely upon municipal trash removal in that particular regard.
Where are you?
I meant that paragraph that begins the design engineer-
Oh, you're still there, okay.
Addressed in the operations-
All of that will be addressed in the operations manual that we talked about. So in essence, we are agreeing to that, we're just clarifying where that's going to occur. Okay, so now, the next paragraph, or the next section, is wildlife species and habitat. As I indicated, we have an environmental consultant here that can go through in greater detail, but the short answer is, A, that the DEP has already reviewed this and issued an LOI that has addressed any affected species that are regulated as to this property. Many of the ones that are indicated in this report are just simply not regulated as to this property. Number two, there are no species that are relative to this property that would not allow us to build the project exactly as proposed. Now, I can have our, if you would like to hear more on that, I'll swear in, I'll ask you to swear in our environmental consultant who can go into more detail, that's up to you.
Anyone?
Okay.
Now, I'd be interested in hearing that.
Sure. Wait, we got one no and one yes?
Sure, I'd like to hear from him.
Okay. Could we hear briefly on-
Sure, absolutely. And the key word, Harry, is, I think I heard the word briefly, so, if we can have him sworn in, sure.
If you could raise your right hand.
Sure.
Do you swear, or from the testimony you're about to give, it be the truth?
Yes.
So I just want to affirm, could you please say your full name and spell your last name?
Sure.
Harry Strano, S-T-R-A-N-O. I reside in eastern Pennsylvania, work for Amy Green Environmental Consultants. I've been there eleven years. I've been in the wildlife profession for eighteen years.
We ask that he be accepted as an expert in environmental issues in general, but in particularly with regard to threatened endangered species and the specific comments in your report.
Accept credentials.
Okay. So, Harry, you've had an opportunity to review the report-
Yes.
That vindicated with, had been prepared by the environmental commission?
Yes.
And you're also familiar with the property in question and worked on the letter of interpretation from the DEP that addressed those issues? If you would briefly let us know what your conclusions are and what your investigation has revealed.
Okay. Well, through the LOI process, I was in the field for two days on site, delineated the wetlands on the site, became familiar with the vegetation communities. As part of the LOI process, we also look at the natural heritage letter that comes in from the DEP, as well as the landscape project, which is mapping for threatened endangered- from the DEP, as well as the landscape project, which is mapping for threatened endangered species on-site. What is mapped on-site is special concern species which are not regulated in the context of this project. Also, we looked at the natural heritage letter, and there is no endangered or threatened species on that letter that would in any way interfere with the development of the project. That said, there's also U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service review that the project will go through when we submit permits for both wetlands and flood hazard area, and that will review any impacts to federal bats, the Indiana bat and the northern long-eared bat. That would, the determination on any activities that would need to be taken to prevent impacts of those bats would be determined by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service during that process to ensure that there wouldn't be any impacts to those species, so.
Any questions with regard to the environmental testimony? Okay. Then I'm going to continue on with regard to this report. Now, I don't know what, there's no page numbers, but let me see if I can do my best to get you a page. I believe it's the fourth page. One, two, three, assuming math is correct, we're on the fourth page. And so, let me address it from the, there are two titles, two sections entitled Recommendations. At the top of those two, so with regard to the recommendations, as was indicated, there is nothing that we need to do other than go through the state permitting process with regard to the various species, and the only thing that potentially has an impact are the bat species that have been identified, and that's something that Fish and Wildlife will address. And it only deals with timing of construction, is the only thing that is potentially implicated in that particular case. It will not prevent the construction or development in any regard. Continuing down? You're okay with this? Okay, the next one is with regard to the green development checklist, as I said, we'll certainly take into consideration any and all the recommendations with regard to we've submitted, what our anticipation is with regard to the green development. But all of that, since we haven't actually designed the houses, will need to be dealt with at the permitting, at the construction permit stage.
And Gary, I take your work with staff on that?
Absolutely.
So when, excuse me, so on the bottom of the fourth page, we have recommendations, recommend that the plan incorporate the use of green building material and finishes, et cetera. You're not agreeing to these specific recommendations?
Correct, because we can, it's premature for us to be able to do so at this point.
That's true, the first and second.
Is there any way we can get any kind of assurance that you'll try to do that, or?
I'm not sure what else we can do without knowing the details. I mean, I can certainly assure you that there will be some green building techniques that will be incorporated into the ultimate homes, I just don't know what those will be at the time.
Would it be fair to put in place a condition, from your point of view, that said that you'll incorporate all the green development?
Sorry, can you?
Would it be fair to impose a condition, in your view, that said you'll incorporate all the green development techniques recommended by staff to the extent practicable?
No, but what he's saying is, what the staff, if it's practical, what you commit to do with the staff? No, no, this said you would consider. That's the issue. The checklist that we did said that you would consider certain things, and they want you to make more formal commitment, basically to, you know, to take this last recommendation as regard to green building. Am I wrong, I thought the checklist only, I'm sorry, if you can just give us a minute earlier? Thanks. Okay, that request is acceptable.
Thank you.
Okay. So if, and then going on to the next page, up until the last couple of paragraphs, all of those deal with the green building, we've submitted you the checklist, and we're going to, you know, rely upon that, but we'll work with your staff at the time.
So rather than putting any of these specifically, will it kind of all be incorporated within that more generic?
Exactly, exactly. The next paragraph deals with space for, you know, for recyclables, waste, et cetera. There'll be space in the garage for whatever storage is necessary, and again, there's going to be municipal removal of a waste. And last but not least, recommending demolition and construction waste be recycled and a note be added to the demo, and we're going to add that to the demo plan. So the answer is yes, we'll comply with that last recommendation. And that, I think, unless there's something I've missed, is the extent of the reports that we've received, and then subject to any further discussion on it, we'll, I'm thinking we're pretty much wrapped up here.
Okay, are there any further questions? Yes, Ms. Elman?
I just want to be clear, will the developer be building all of the houses, that's me, or will each lot purchaser be building their own house?
I think it's a little bit soon to know that. You know, typically development like this, in today's day and age, you know, they're individual develops, but as you know, you have a lot of custom homes here in Princeton, so the answer is, I just don't know.
I see.
Yes.
Are we going to address the issue of the, who owns the open space?
Yes, we can.
I mean, is that, I don't know if that was planned, I mean, I just want to make sure we cover it. I don't know when we were going to do it.
Do you want to start the discussion on that? Do you have a recommendation?
Well, I would prefer that the homeowners' association own it. I mean, I feel like that way they'll maintain it, and it's less that the town has to maintain, and, but we'll still have a trail, since environmentally, it's not really that great for people to go off the trail anyway, right? So I think it would be better for the homeowner to keep it.
Right. Right. Any other?
Yeah, I agree with that position, too.
But the cul-de-sac would actually be a municipal street?
That's correct.
All right, if no one else wants to discuss this, you can all think about it, but I'm going to open the meeting for public comment and see if there's anyone here who'd like to speak to this application. They're certainly a reasonable audience. Come forward, give your name, be sworn in, you have about three minutes to talk.
If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, could you please state your full name and spell your last name for the record?
My name is Michael L. Pisaro, it's P-I-S-A-U-R-O, Jr. I'm the policy director for the Stony Brook Millstone Watershed Association, and I, in general, really had just a couple questions to ask versus testimony.
Is it my phone?
Oh, sorry.
It's hard to hear you.
All right, sorry. I just had a few questions regarding the stormwater management systems, if I may, just to get some clarification. I do want to start out by thanking the applicant for doing the clustering and preserving 60%. That is a great thing, and so just wanted to go through and ask just a few general questions. I understand that the runoff is going to be reduced, but is that reduced from the entire site, or are you reducing it from just the area that is being developed?
Just the area that's being developed.
Okay. And the water that is infiltrate, or being piped to the basin, is there any disconnected systems between the houses and the stormwater basin? So basically, what I'm getting at to is the non-structural requirements under New Jersey DEP regs and the township's ordinance requires that, to the maximum extent practical, that non-structural systems be developed. And I think I heard an agreement that vegetative swells would be used on the lots, but then I also heard that, well, the lots may be developed by other applicants, and so I'm trying to get a better sense of what kind of non-structural systems you are using, and how are you disconnecting, to the maximum extent practical, the stormwater?
Well, we disconnected, none of the roofs?
Just speaking to the mic. To apologize for turning her back to you, but?
That's all right, I'm used to it.
The runoff from the roofs, runoff into a grass swell, there's a reduced slope grass swell, there will be grass, as accepted as a LED non-structural strategy.
So I guess the question was, in particular, what's going to be done by swell and what is going to be piped into the basin? Is there piping into the basin?
There is piping into the basin, all the piping is in the street, as required by the ORSIS. The runoff from the houses go over land into swells and into the street, which goes into the gutters and then into the inlets, which are piped to the basin.
And then there's some additional swells after the basin?
There is an existing swell, it's a wooded swell that goes out to the tributary to Harries Brook.
And that wooded swell is going to be maintained, you're not disturbing it, you're not changing it?
Correct.
Have you looked at what kind of runoff that's going to hit that swell, and what pollutants are actually running into it? Because you indicated it's going to be 80% TSS removal, but right now, there's very little total suspended solids hitting that, because there's very little development there now. So you're going to be increasing the loading in the first place? You're removing 80% of it, but still, 20% is still going through. Do you, have you looked at how much is going to actually hit the stream?
We have not, we just complied with the NGDEP requirements, they only require 80% total suspended requirement.
And that's consistent with the ordinance as well, implementing DEP regulations?
Correct.
Is there ways to remove even more than that, using non-structural systems?
I think one of the items that we talked about is some type of vegetative bottom to the basin, as opposed to just the sand, and I think if we can come up with something that would increase the solids removal.
I would greatly appreciate that. One of the problems we are having, and that's, I guess, where I'm getting into slight testimony.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I apologize. To the extent that we can remove as much of the runoff as possible onto our streams, and the Harries Brook being one of the streams, it's vastly important. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection just released their 303D list, which is a report that DEP produces every two years showing water quality, and what we are seeing is, water quality is not getting significantly better. For example, throughout the state, only 16% of the streams that have been monitored meet aquatic standards. So only 16% of the streams in the state of New Jersey meets, are healthy enough for aquatic life. And DEP has found a vast majority of that problem is because of development. So I appreciate the applicant, as I said, clustering and preserving property, but I would urge the applicant and the township to do as much as possible to remove as much as possible for the pollutants running into that stream, because if we don't go above the base minimum, we're never going to see us meeting water quality standards. I guess one other question, and I'm just not clear, if the developer is not actually, in most instances, going to be actually building on the lots, how can we be assured that the non-structural, the swells are actually going to be developed?
And that's something that we review when the individual plot plan comes by. So as I said, what they've shown is kind of a generic grading plan, how the lots would be graded, and one of the things they've shown is, on the individual property lines between each of the units, there's the grass swell. So that would be something that would have to be maintained, regardless of who builds a house or what type of house, that grass swell down the property line would still have to be maintained. So that's something we do when we look at the plot plans in the engineering department.
So that's going to be a requirement of the approval?
That's correct.
Great, I appreciate it, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to?
If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, if you could state your full name and spell your last name, please?
Andrew Golden, G-O-L-D-E-N, Carol's husband. And I live at 575 Snowden, right across the street, and I am impressed, there are many improvements to this plan. One element, though, is a concern, which is where that street has moved to, whereas before it terminated right across the street from the park, it now terminates right across the street from my living room, which involves quite a bit of traffic with headlights going into my living room and dining area. And so that's just a personal consideration, which sure has to be balanced against bigger elements. But the other concern is just for the safety issue of that change in termination and what it would mean for traffic, there's quite a bit of pedestrian and bicycle traffic, some of which will be moved by this path, or the sidewalk, although that won't really help that much till it's connected. And there's a hill at crest right by our house, and it already is quite dangerous when cars coming over that hill, have to deal with the pedestrian traffic and the bicycles. I just wanted to make sure that whatever rules that consider the proper safety for traffic, take into account this extra element of the pedestrian flow.
Jack?
I'll address at least part of that, and one of the reasons that the road did move was because of the crest of that hill. One of the concerns in the original plan was, there wasn't adequate site distance for any car leaving this road looking to the north because of the crest of that hill. So by moving the road further up the hill, it increased the visibility looking to the north. To address some of the concerns, as far as the impact on the, you know, the lights going right into his living room, we can look at the possibility of maybe tweaking the location a little bit to, you know, push it a little bit further south to minimize some of those impacts. But the reason it moved to the north was because of the crest of the hill to get proper site distance.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else?
If you could raise your right hand?
Oh, of course.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, if you could please state your full name and spell your last name?
Indeed, hi, my name is Raymond Forsyth DeVoe III, I live at?
If you could hear you, speak closer to the mic, that'd be great.
Raymond Forsyth DeVoe III, I live at 422 Snowden Lane, I'm about 1,800 feet down south from the Windy Top proposed development. I just wanted to say I was extremely encouraged by this residential cluster arrangement. I'm someone who has seen firsthand the results of sort of a poor tree preservation plan in the lot to the north of me, so I can attest firsthand that, you know, something that's going to save and preserve as many trees as possible is something that is of immense value. Also speaking for most of the residents and homeowners on Snowden Lane, appreciate the commitment that both Snowden Development and Landmark Development has shown towards the sewer that is going to, the alternate sewer that's going to run down the middle of Snowden Lane. Just for a quick moment, because we've been working on it for about two years now, some of you already know that, this is a, it's a gravity-fed system, it's going to go over the culvert at the bottom of the hill and tie into a trunk line on the other side, 10 feet, 15 feet, I'm not sure. It's going to enable about eight houses to tie in, and there will be no wetlands disturbing. This is like light-years ahead, and in marked contrast to the previous proposal, which utilizes, I guess, an easement to go under the stream by all sounds and tie in, I'm not clear whether it was to repair, or update, or replace a pump station there, this would serve only the developing, the two developments. And, you know, it disturbs the wetlands. So the only reason I bring this up is because, and I'm sorry, sir, I did not get the attorney for the applicant name.
Gary Ford.
Gary, I'm sorry. Okay, Gary, you had said that this proposal, if it is there, we will tie in. If not, perhaps, you know, reapply and permit. Is there a deadline at which point that this should, you know, would be completed or need to be completed? Or what's the criteria for tying in?
It's not, I can't give you a firm date because we don't know how quickly it's going to.
That's okay. Again, forgive my back to you.
No problem.
We can't give you a firm date because we don't know how quickly the various projects are going to progress. But needless to say, the line has to be in before we construct our development in order to be able to tie into it. We can't tie into something that's not there. So I can't give you a specific date. I don't know if anyone has any other insights than I do, but...
It has to actually be approved before you start your development. It's a condition of approval that, of this approval would be that you have approval for the sewer line.
That's where I follow you.
You have to have approval from DEP to construct the sewer line would be a condition of the approval of this development?
Absolutely. Okay. Well, lastly, we were talking about the, I think, 7.5 acres possibly be donated, whether it's, you know, or committed to, or preserved rather, whether it's run by the management or by the township or by open space. That would be absolutely wonderful. You know, it would, you know, it's something that, you know, nobody loves development near them or in their area. But, you know, something like this, you know, this possible donation, the cluster plan, and the commitment to the sewer, I think, would represent a significant contribution to both the environment and the community. And it's in keeping with the master plan. It's going to remove some homes from septic, and it's going to preserve open space. So inasmuch as we'd be committed to the sewers, we would be pleased with the development.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else? No? All right. No one else comes forward, let me close the public portion.
I'm sorry? Did you? Okay, well, I'll hold off then.
If you could raise your right hand?
Hi.
If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, so it's sworn or affirmed. Could you please state your full name and spell your last name?
Yeah. I am Huiye, H-U-I-Y-E. I'm a Chinese origin from far east of China. While the climate is warm, wet, and almost no snow. So that's why the heavy snow in the first winter when we were staying in 456 Snowden Lane delighted us very much. We spent hours to watch the snow falling down from the sky, one piece after another, and to the ground, one layer covering another. Soon piled up, hiding every details and colors in his landing. We feel that's very fantastic. But with the weeks our journey blocked, we realized to our horror that our old septic system chose to go on strike on such a beautiful day. A list of calls were made. No one could come to rescue. Another list of calls were made. All the rooms in affordable hotels were not available. All the available rooms are in the hotels beyond our budget. So after watching one video after another in YouTube, we were convinced by the online experts that we could do it yourself. So armed with primitive tools, we set out into the coldness. Shivering, shaking, we pushed away the heavy snow digging into the freezing earth, searching for that very important D box, which connects the tank and the pipes. Very fast, we found it and we fixed it. But from that day on, I could, unable to look at a snowscape with ease. And up to today, our daily life still relies on the old septic system. I guess by now, you, all of you should have, must have understood my situation. I needed to get my house connected to the public sewer system urgently and bitterly. I know, actually, I don't care so much about the Snowden developed company since I'm such a selfish person. I understand they only changed their plans to modern sewer houses based on the public sewer system. But they say they have two choices. They may go westbound to connect to the station on the Van Dyke. But I say, please, let's stop connecting the public sewer system down along the Snowden Lane. Sometimes, sometimes maybe that's the, to others, maybe that's only one sentence. Like in a paper indicate this house has a septic tank. But actually, that's a real life. So I mean, please, let the septic, public sewer line go down along the Snowden Lane, get our house connected to it. Help to build a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, is there anyone else who wants to speak? All right. Hearing none. Let me close the public portion of the meeting. All right, board members, are there things that we need to discuss and haven't talked about? Jenny has made a point about the nature of the open space, and I think we need a recommendation in our motion for that. So maybe I could see a show of hands. How many of you think it should be private open space? And how many?
Hey.
And how many think it should be public? Well, it looks like private open space is sort of the order of the day right now.
But the stipulation that the paths have public access? And can we also stipulate that the path will connect to any other trails that are built in lands that are adjacent to the property? Because we wouldn't want to have just a loop trail if there's going to be other open space that's adjacent.
Yeah, I'm, Jack?
There would actually have to be two easements granted as part of, that would be, you know, on the open space. And one would be north-south running along the stream, and then the other one running from the cul-de-sac to tie into that north-south path. So there would actually be an easement granted to the municipality, so it would be a public path.
But I think the one clarification, and tell me if I'm wrong with Jack. I don't, we're building it to the property line. If there's going to be a connection, someone else has to build the rest of it that connects to that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Let me clarify that. There's going to be two public access easements then. One, the one basically shown conceptually on the plans running from the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
And the second running along the stream. But we're not asking the developer to install that path?
No, that would ultimately done when the remainder of that path, you know, when the adjacent development to the south comes in. And then there's actually another easement that's required south of that to get down to Van Dyke. So that's something that would happen in the future, but we want to at least allow for it with this development.
But part of that path, as I understand, the one you just described, that would be on this property, and we'd have a public access easement and also an easement to go in and construct and maintain it. Is that?
Correct.
That's good. And then I assume there'd also be a broader conservation easement over the whole?
Yes.
Open space. That is if the township doesn't take it.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other points that?
I just want to clarify, then again, just make sure I'm clear. So the municipality would still be maintaining the path and building the path? The one along the stream?
Along the stream, yeah.
Okay. All right, but the one from the cul-de-sac?
To the stream.
To the stream. That would be installed by the developer?
And maintained by the developer.
And maintained by the developer, right?
Yes, I mean, but if you want public access, it has to be a public easement.
Right. Access easement, but not maintenance easement?
Yes, I think the clarification is that that would be maintained by the homeowners' association.
Okay. Any? Go ahead.
I just have two other issues. The first, we talked about the asphalt path. The developer indicated that they wanted the option of either having the homeowners' association maintain the path or the individual property owners abutting the path. I don't know if you want to talk about that at all. You know, I think with individual property owners, it's always hit or miss. Sometimes they shovel the snow and maintain.
I may have been a little bit premature on that particular item. What is happening with any other paths along Snowden and other areas of town?
As far as I know, all the other paths along Snowden are maintained by the homeowners. I don't believe the municipality maintains any of those paths. As far as I know, I am.
Adjacent property owner, at least most of those bicycle paths along Stockton and Rosedale and so on are the individual abutting homeowners.
That's my understanding.
Right, that's the typical pattern. I mean, we have.
That's the ordinance, isn't it? Isn't it in the ordinance?
Right. I think we have the opportunity here, though, since there's a homeowners' association. If you'd rather have the homeowners' association do it, I think the board can impose that condition. I think that's a more practical approach personally, but that's a judgment call the board got to make.
I think that's a good idea, to have the homeowners' association take responsibility. I think to put that responsibility on, say, two homeowners, who may or may not be conscientious or qualified, is not in our best interest.
Let me see if I can play a little devil's advocate on that particular item. As you know, typically homeowners, whether they've got 10 feet of sidewalk or they've got 200 feet of sidewalk, are responsible for maintaining that. If we had to, as a homeowners' association, bring someone out to shovel or plow a sidewalk, you can imagine, since that's the only thing that they would have to plow or dress, that might be difficult or burdensome. So that's why I ask for the flexibility. Treat this like every other home, every other property, where typically it's the homeowner that does it. Now, I understand that there may be reasons that the association may want to take that responsibility, but, you know, generally you're imposing a responsibility here for such a small development that may very well be impractical.
Frankly, if I were buying one of those two houses adjacent to the walkway and knew that I was going to have to be responsible for it, I wouldn't be very interested in buying those properties.
That's why we give a choice to, you know, we would like to leave it open so that we can either do it for the homeowners' association or the property owner. Because if you look at any other place in town, you may not want to maintain the sidewalk in front of your house. But if you look at any other place in town, that's exactly what people do. And if they're on a corner, they have both sidewalks to deal with. But is there a portion of it, I'm not clear on where the wetland, I mean, where the lot?
Whether it's all private?
The one that, it looks like there might be a part of the property that is not, that's part of the open space that's adjacent to the road, but I can't, is that right?
That's correct. There is a portion to the south that's adjacent to part of the open space lot.
Right, so I think that's what the concern is. Because that's not adjacent to any of the property owners. But I think you're talking about a relatively small strip. You know, personally, I'd like to leave it open-ended because one of the things we can do is perhaps impose that responsibility on the property owner just to do it to the end there. But I don't know what's the most practical. And given that the ultimate builder is not in the room today, or may not be in the room today, you know, I just want to have a little flexibility there so we can make a very practical decision at the time. I think that makes, I mean, I think either the homeowner or a homeowners' association, just as long as it's not the municipality, is what my concern is.
I'm actually concerned about just the burden. If you look at the map, the person who is going to be living in that house, I don't know what direction it is, but like below the cul-de-sac south. And that's an enormous amount of sidewalk and path clear. And this is going to be an essential, safe place for all the kids who are there to walk. And we don't want, when there's snow, for the kids to be walking in the middle of Snowden. And it just concerns me that, you know, we want to make sure that it does get maintained.
Go ahead, Melville.
It won't be the responsibility of that one homeowner because that one homeowner is part of an association. And the dues collected from that will pay for the maintenance on the exterior of those units. Am I correct?
That's a question.
No, I think I'm right.
No, no, what Gary is saying is he wants the developer to have the option of either imposing that obligation of maintenance on the homeowners' association or on the individual lot owners abutting the lot. Now, as a practical matter, I should point out, and I think Jenny makes a very good point. One of the abutting lots is owned by, if the homeowners' association owns the open space, it will have to take care of part of that path anyway.
Well, I don't know, but I've walked the downtown of Princeton whenever it snows. And I can tell you that homeowners, individual homeowners, aren't very responsible. And I do think that having that walkway be clear is a major necessity for the community. So however you decide, I think we're going to have to find some way of making absolutely sure that it's enforced. Because I'm not keen to have that distance simply left up to the whim of whoever happens to be living in the house at the time. I agree with you, but I'm telling you, if the homeowners' association is responsible for the maintenance, that should be determined upfront. I understand that. Because then the onus will not be on any one homeowner because that association is going to get some outside contractor to come in and take care of those things.
Right, and all of the sidewalks surrounding the cul-de-sac will be public sidewalk, I presume, since it's a public street? Is that right? The sidewalks on either side of the?
Those are maintained by the homeowner.
Yeah, they're in the right of way, but they're maintained by the?
But they, so that, you know, it would behoove the homeowners' association to contract with a snow removal firm to do all of that sidewalk around the cul-de-sac as well as the street. You know, it just, it's the kind of thing most homeowners' associations do, so. Anyway.
Are you talking about the sidewalks in front of these houses? That's not something a homeowners' association of this sort with such a small development typically does. It's almost always the property owner who's, in fact, I don't know your ordinance in that regard, but your ordinance, many ordinances, require the homeowner to be responsible for the sidewalk in front of their house. So...
Yeah, I mean, typically it is the individual homeowner. Obviously, as a group, they have the ability to say, let's band together and, you know, hire one company to do everything. But that's getting those seven homeowners all to agree on something.
Wouldn't that be determined by the terms of the contents of the master deed, the documents?
If that's in their homeowners' documents.
By homeowners' association?
But typically, the sidewalk in front of your house wouldn't be included in the homeowners' document. They could include it, but typically it's not.
But those, that's mostly for single homeowners. I mean, in front of my house, I don't expect Princeton to shovel the snow or do anything else, cut the grass or do anything else. Were I in a homeowners' association, those decisions would be made by a board of directors, and those sidewalks would be clean.
Ms. Trautman, I'm not sure that you're making distinction between the various types of homeowners' associations. If you have a condominium, multifamily, and the condo association pursuant to a master deed owns all of the land, they will typically do all of the shoveling. It is rare, if not very exceptional, that when you're dealing with single-family homes, that the homeowners' association has any responsibility. Keep in mind, the homeowners' association will not own those sidewalks. They will not own any portion of those lots that are impacted, with the exception of the one small sliver in front of, you know, along Snowden that's on the property. the one small sliver in front of, you know, along Snowden, that's on the property to be owned by homeowners. The homeowners' association, in this particular case, is very limited in nature. It'll be responsible for the detention basin, which effectively is open space, and depending upon whether you accept the dedication of the open space, it may be responsible for that as well. But it's very limited in nature in terms of scope of their responsibility. I certainly don't want to set a precedent that now you want a homeowners' association to maintain sidewalks in front of individual homeowners. You have homeowners' associations presumably all over the place in town that do nothing of the sort when you're talking about single-family homes. It's a much more limited scope than your typical condo association in a multifamily context. This is not that context.
I agree with you, including the fact that you said it's very rare. I didn't say it was that common, I said it is done sometimes, and the master deed dictates that. So there are circumstances where it is done.
I personally am not aware of any.
But, I mean, I think the real issue before the board isn't the sidewalks in front of the houses. It's really the sidewalk, the path along Snowden, and it's just fortuitous that it happens to be bordering two particular lots. So why those two homeowners have to take care of this sidewalk, which doesn't benefit them any more than it benefits anybody else? I mean, that's really the issue. And especially, well, the homeowners' association's going to have to be out to clean that portion of the sidewalk that abuts its property.
How wide is that sidewalk going to be along us now?
Six feet.
Six feet, but Jerry, this is no different.
That does make a difference.
It's no different than any other corner lot. You have to do two sidewalks if your house is on a corner. The issue is whether the homeowners' association is going to have to do the little piece that's in front of what they own. The town has an ordinance that requires people to remove the snow within 48 hours or something. You know, I don't know what more we can really do.
Twenty-four, isn't it?
I think the board in this circumstance would have the power to require that the homeowners' association be responsible for the maintenance, but it's a board choice.
Okay, board members? Well, mainly, it's that one place where there's no home, right? There's going to be a sidewalk that goes through that one place where there's no home. But I do, the ordinance doesn't cover that, so I do think that the ordinance, our ordinance will cover the other parts of the sidewalk.
I think the ordinance covers that too. The ordinance requires, in that case, the homeowners' association to maintain that little piece.
Oh, it does, okay.
So what you're saying is that our ordinance says that the abutting, whoever controls the abutting property is responsible?
Is responsible. And I think what the applicant is saying is, they would make it a condition, a deed of sale of that house, that they have to maintain that extra piece.
Well, the applicant's saying that they want the option to either require that, or to have the homeowners' association do it.
You know, one of the things that, and part of the reasons we're discussing this is a practicality. Small homeowners' associations are sometimes not very efficient. As opposed to, you know, typical homeowner knows what their responsibility is, and some do a better job than others of maintaining it, but they know what their responsibilities are. I'm just trying not to make this impractical. I understand your concern about wanting to make sure that the sidewalks are shoveled like every other sidewalk in town. Don't want to create an impracticality by treating this differently than other properties, almost exclusively, almost entirely within Princeton, and almost entirely with every other municipality. Like I said, I'm not aware of any that is in this type of context, that imposes that responsibility on a homeowners' association. If we had a homeowners' association, and this was 100, 200, 300 units, and we're having this discussion, I'd beg off. I mean, it's not an issue, because they're responsible, and they're out there all the time doing various things they need to do. This is a very small homeowners' association. And candidly, they're, as often as not, not all that efficient. We need one here because of the detention basin, we need one here because of the, possibly because of the open space, but I don't want to make it impractical in terms of things that may or may not get done well, or frankly, may be something that they're knocking on your door in the future, saying, hey, this doesn't work, you got to give us some relief, we've got a problem with it. So I'm really just trying to be practical about how I'm addressing it, and asking you to address it at least, at least in the same context as you want any other development in town, and not make this potentially impractical.
Okay, any further thoughts?
Well, you make a reasonable case, I'm not going to go to ground on this one. But I just want to say that from the beginning, this has been such a terrific development. It started off really horrible, in my mind, and the cluster, the way it's been clustered, the land that's been preserved, the abutment to other public land, I think in the possibility of a sewer that's going to come down, Snowden, there are so many really good things about this, and I think the application is well done. I really liked your, the sustainable report that your people did. I thought the reports were good, both our staff reports and your reports were really helpful. I mean, I wish I could have the power to control the designs of these houses, which we don't, obviously, because it's going to be such a unique site, and it would be great to have, you know, unique buildings on it as well. So I hope that happens, but I can't do anything about it. You know, I think it's a good plan, it's a win-win for almost everybody.
Could I just ask one thing? I got a phone call from somebody about this. They asked why the name Windy Top?
I have no idea. Do we know why the name Windy Top?
Because the...
Come on up, and let's just get you sworn in very quickly.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear?
Leaving on, last name A N. Yeah, the previous owner, his dad has a...
Hold on, I'm going to swear you in. Do you swear, or from the testimony you're about to give, to be the truth? If you could raise your right hand.
Yes.
Okay, and again, if you could say your full name and spell it?
Li Ping, last name A N.
Li Ping, just for the record, what's your relationship to this development?
I'm the partner of the Snowden Development LLC.
We can't hear you.
You can put the microphone out.
Pick it up, pick it up and hold it.
Yeah, I'm the partner for the LLC.
Oh, okay.
So the question was, why the name, was it Windy Top?
Yes, was it called this before, or?
Yeah, the previous owner, Mr. Golden, he said his dad owned the farm, which named it Windy Top. So he asked us if we could to use the name to honor his family.
Right, this is, because there is a Windy Top Farm in Montgomery that abuts Princeton, has a Princeton address, so there's always the possibility of confusion when there are two places with the same name.
I was just going to confirm what he said. I happen to know Gordon Fisher, who was the son of Burr Fisher, who owned the property, and it was a Scottish thing, or Irish thing, that he said, they named their property, and they named it Windy Top. So I can confirm that from other sources.
Well, just, we'll work it out with the fire department on the address.
If there's an issue from a fire safety perspective, we'll address it.
Okay. All right, are there any other?
Okay, so it sounds to me like we'll leave the condition the way it's going to be the developer's choice with respect to the maintenance of the asphalt path. It sounds to me like where we are, is that we're going to leave it as the developer warranted, where it's going to be its choice as to whether the individual homeowners are going to maintain the path, and for the part of the path that abuts the open space, the homeowners' association will do that, if the homeowners' association still owns it, rather than the homeowners' association. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes.
I just have one other issue, it's really minor. I know the environmental commission had suggested, I think it was the environmental commission, that the path be, not the asphalt path, the one in the open space be narrowed? I don't know if anybody, what is it now, Gary? Do you know the width?
Does anyone know what the width is?
Six feet? Why don't we leave that a detail for the municipal engineer to work out?
Okay.
That would be acceptable to us.
We might want to ask the open, I mean, I think there's a little bit of a pull between the open space and the environmental commission, because the environmental commission and the shade tree commission didn't want any path, so I'm not sure who we should listen to about narrowing it. I mean, I don't know what the paths are in the other.
Right, that's why I was suggesting leave the detail. I don't know what our standard is either. I think it's wood chips, and I don't know if it's four feet or six feet.
And I think part of the objective is probably going to be in terms of dealing with being out in the field, you know, the attempt to save trees. So if four feet makes a difference, I suspect they'll do four feet, and if six feet doesn't make a difference, perhaps we'll end up doing six feet. But that's something really you have to be out in the field to deal with.
Okay, so field determination on that one? Okay. Any, did you have any other?
The other issue, I think the staff is going to work, I mean, Mr. Golden left, but about the location of where the street is coming out to Snowden, so that it's least disruptive to the house across the street.
Should they make minor adjustments?
That's correct, if possible. We're not sure that it's possible to move it, but we would look at that to see if we can tweak the location, so it's less of an impact on the adjacent property.
Adjacent property, that's a property question.
Abutting or opposing, I guess.
Just, one other condition, I don't think I had it in my report, but the concern with the name Windy Top for the street, just that that name be approved by the emergency services and the post office.
Yeah, no problem. I'm not even sure there's going to be a sign that says Windy Top, so maybe a, you know, a theoretical name as opposed to literally a...
Isn't that the name of the street?
That's the name of the street that I planned.
Oh, I see what you're saying, in terms of name of the street, yeah. I mean, that's always going to be subject to emergency services.
You're not having permanent signage of any sort.
Not that I anticipated, and I forgot the street name. So I thought, the reason I said that is because I didn't think anyone would know it as Windy Top, but you point out it's a street name, so that needs to be addressed by emergency services regardless.
So is everyone set with the conditions as outlined, and that we've gone over? Are there any other outstanding issues? Can I have a motion, then?
I'll move it.
Okay, and that'll be for preliminary and final measures. Some division approval with the waiver with respect to onsite discharge and the order of conditions?
All right. And is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Second by re-charge. Second by Ms. Alman. All right, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Burge?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Ms. Kremiller?
Yes.
Mayor Lempert?
Yes.
Mrs. Trotman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
I think I left out Ms. Alman.
You forgot me.
Mrs. Alman?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Here's the street sign, Mount Lucas Road.
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor of adjourn? Okay.